Okay, everybody, welcome to the December thirteenth, 2018 work session of the Penfield Planning Board. Allison, please call and roll.
Hetske?
Here.
Bastian?
Here.
Knauer?
Here.
Tidings?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Nurseinger?
Here.
Saintster?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Weiser?
Here.
Alright, we have a meeting minutes from the November eighth meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to take a look at them and review them. If somebody would care to move to approve them, that'd be great.
So moved.
Okay, Burton and Tidings.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Alright, our table applications, we got a couple of sketch plans that may be good to-
Start with those.
-start with and get those taken care of. And you can spend a little bit more time on the table applications.
Sounds good. I'll start with the first sketch plan listed on the agenda, that's for Atlantic Fifty, Atlantic Two-Fifty LLC, Pento, Crossings, application, a mixed-use project that's been reviewed by the board again as a sketch plan. Last time the board met, we kinda went over some of the details of the sketch letter that was proposed, that was prepared for you. And there were a few things that we did some research on, made necessary corrections. And the letter has been, again, revised and provided for your final review and any additional input that you may have on the application. So I'd open up to the board for the last round of comments on it if any.
Would you have any changes they wanna make or comments? Or we could send it out?
We've captured everything we talked about.
Okay.
Alright.
Just take a couple votes then.
Yeah. Somebody wanna move to send the sketch plan letter?
So moved.
Burton?
Same.
Bastian?
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Great, we'll follow up with the applicant and they'll begin preparing a preliminary final application when they're ready to submit that for the board's review.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, next one.
Moving on to our other sketch plan application, that's at seventeen twenty-five Scribner Road. This was heard at the public hearing last meeting for a thirteen lot residential subdivision under cluster development. There were a number of people that spoke. I think the boards have some soak time now to review both what was captured in the minutes, the video. And kinda had to pick up where we left off and have a conversation about what we were thinking as the overall proposal for the sketch plan, the layout, the comparison between the conventional plan and cluster plan.
Is there a way to do that or no?
You wanna see the aerial or just conventional versus?
Well, it could be, we should show both, but-
Do a side-by-side.
So one thing we did receive since the public, since the meeting was that a couple items on the plan had been revised to include the hammerhead turnarounds. That's shown on this plan now, they had shown it on the board during the presentation, although in your electronic files, we only had the previous version of this. So it's since been updated as well, just wanted to point that out.
And- How is staff with the hammerhead?
Well, it's-
They'll house a-
So how we look at hammerheads and the use of them is, our code allows the board to apply those in the design phase if you feel that there is the potential to provide a future connection to development to either the north or south when those properties, if those properties, never know when, the history is a long time away of what could potentially be there and provide a connection to other homes. If you do not feel that that's the case, then the applicant has to revise this and look at either doing a private drive or providing cul-de-sacs in their layout because the board feels that that connection is not feasible. And then that's what the code would require for a dedicated road. So, based on the layout, based on the area surrounding, staff is comfortable with the hammerheads. As long as the board is comfortable with that layout. Again, the code does allow for that, but it's up to the board to evaluate what's there and decide what would be best suited for the project.
The geometry of those is dictated by state code.
Of the hammerhead?
Yeah, there's actually a couple of alternatives to that geometry that you see that using here, but yeah.
Okay.
And when you look at it, I mean, it's, yeah, obviously determined, the layout of the road, cul-de-sacs or hammerhead determines the number of lots that could ultimately be there based on conventional plan, but when you do look at the cluster plan, just as a review, it, they are proposing to preserve about, oh, nearly four acres of land with this, with the proposal on the right under the cluster development. A large portion of that preserved area, to remain undisturbed rather, would be under a deed restriction as the applicant mentioned during their public hearing. So you do save a good chunk of land of the original parent parcel clustering the lots to the north. They would have smaller sizes than your conventional one, R-120 lots. You know, a little less site setback, less lot width. But nothing we haven't seen before in terms of the lot size. So, it is a good cluster plan when it comes to looking at this type of development for single-family homes.
About a quarter acre?
Yeah.
Ten thousand square feet roughly, right? Most.
A little more, you got, you know, eighty by some one-twenty-fives, a hundred by one-twenty-five, so a good mix in there.
Can, let's go to the conventional. So basically, what we need to look at, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but we need to determine that that conventional plan would be an approvable plan. And then, would we rather see the two-seventy-eight plan as an alternative? So that basically giving us our density calculations.
And to that point, they have provided the stormwater management facilities on the conventional plan. Showing us those strips, those biofilters or infiltration areas on the left, behind the lots at the rear. So those are, those have been provided for. The plan on the right under the cluster would give us a stormwater retention area. Pond area that would be dedicated to the town for ownership and maintenance in the future.
Any variances required on the conventional?
No. No, conventional meets conventional with the layout they're showing.
So as the conventional plan stands, you come in and it's technically an approvable plan requiring no variances?
Correct.
Based on the zoning?
Correct, the one thing again that comes into play is the road layout. But in terms of how the lots have been arranged with this layout, everything complies.
And the length of the roadway with a single access isn't excessive for that?
No. I'd like to have to provide a hydrant somewhere along the way and that's to fill the fire marshal's concerns for emergency access and get into a hydrant.
On the cluster plan, those small lot sizes, are, could you fit, like, are we gonna have a bunch of situations in the zoning board where people are gonna and things that are gonna need variances or what, what will fit on those lots? Like which size house could we?
I don't know the size, the size of house I believe in, Steve's in the audience tonight if he has a more accurate number than what I have in my head, but I think you were looking at somewhere around eighteen or two thousand or something?
Ranch homes that'll be eighteen hundred to two thousand square feet.
And targeted more toward the empty nest or?
It's gonna be like Timberland or luxury ranch, actually I've already talked to several people that have, for whatever reason, followed this project, actually live in the neighborhood now. Looking to live in a larger two-story home and going to a single level living. And they like the area, so I have a couple neighbors that are in favor of it and just waiting to see how we make out.
Okay.
To your other point, Pete, about setbacks, that is something that Mark and I have discussed upstairs about something that the board is gonna have to consider at, if this goes to preliminary final language about what the code requires for setbacks under R-120 conventional versus the setbacks proposed here and whether or not accessory structures would comply with the setbacks set here or the setbacks set by the code. Staff is in favor of maintaining what the code requires for R-120 for the ten-foot setbacks that we usually see. And yeah, you probably would still see area variance requests, just like you would under a normal size, it's R-120 lot. We're still seeing people with a twenty thousand square foot lot who still come in asking for area variances for the sheds, decks, pools, fences, whatever they want, they're typically asking for more.
Cause I can see it. So we designed this project, so first of all, there'll be deed restrictions like we had at Timberland against accessory structures, meaning sheds, private maintenance specifically. We've tried to make the building envelopes large enough so that we can accommodate decks and patios without variances, which you'll notice that we have a fairly modest rear setback to avoid people coming in for variances and what have you. We've also done it in the case where you can see that there's not close proximity to a lot of developed property on either side. More than half the lots back up to a strip that's owned by the town of Penfield. And then the other four or five lots on the, would be the east side of the road, back up to a large estate property where there's only currently one home. So we've tried to make it so that even though the rear setbacks are not very large, that they would not impose upon the neighboring property very much. We thought it was good to that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Discussion.
Weird toss.
Zach, could you explain the, between the conventional versus the two-seventy-eight? The ownership of land for the stormwater management?
On conventional, that would, none of that would be owned by the town, there would just be an easement over that.
Okay.
And on the cluster, that would be an owned piece of land with also shows a strip going between lots twelve and thirteen. Also with an easement and, you know, just-
Access easement?
Excess easements in case.
That would be owned by the town?
But it would be owned by the town with access out to the road for future maintenance.
So would, would a district, would it be a townwide district or would it be a district just for that development?
It would likely be just a special improvement for that district.
Okay.
For that development?
For that development, I'm sorry.
For that development, okay.
We just have to look at that a little closer.
Okay.
As it goes forward. And then again, like you said, that special improvement district neighborhood, because we're only putting, changing, that would only affect the taxes for the people who would live in this development.
Thanks.
Yep.
And I like the cluster on the right, I think it's good to plan.
I think the, some of the common comments that we heard from the public at the hearing involved removing some natural buffers. Of course, with the cluster, most of the buffer areas are now at the south end of the property. So I'm wondering out loud whether or not it would be appropriate to ask the developer to put some buffering up at the north end to northwest?
Well, that certainly could be something in the sketch letter. Bring up.
Yeah. And you mentioned-
Some landscape.
In addition to the comments that we heard and recorded, that you got some other information?
Oh, no, I was just recapping them, that we received public comments from the meeting. I haven't heard anything from the public since the meeting, I'm sorry for the confusion there.
Fair enough.
But yeah, part of the sketch letter, we, as, as we usually do for any standard application, we request the, you know, tree survey be done by the applicant to evaluate the health of the trees around the perimeter, those that could be saved. And they did state in their public, in the presentation that, you know, part of selling the lots is how much vegetation is out there and trees are sometimes a selling point. So where they can save them, they will, they would attempt to save them, but we could also add a line to say increasing a buffer, providing a denser buffer to that northern end.
Maybe ask them to provide the board with some alternatives that could, you know, help maintain the enjoyment of the existing properties around there at the north end.
Alternative?
Well, alternative to trees because, you know, we, we see that often where a tree survey is done and, you know, certain trees are slated to-
Stay, come down, whatever.
Stay, come down.
Seems to not follow with the plan.
It's often not what the public had envisioned in terms of, you know, maintaining some kind of a visual buffer.
Could I ask, could I ask this, there are some other applications in town where they've done, are you looking, thinking more of a permanent solution? As in like a six-foot tall fence or something?
Fence, berm, plantings.
Cause there's, there's some applications where-
I don't wanna tell them what to do, but-
Oh, I'm just, yeah, I'm just wondering if there's support from the board where I could, you know, give the applicant a little more direction. There's some app, developments in town where there's, they use a, they use a fence and they kinda break it up with plantings strategically. So it's not just a solid ball fence, but-
It's kind of softened.
It's both permanent and somewhat vegetated at the same time. Breaks up the look.
I would word it in such a way that, that gives them an opportunity to get creative and come up with something that that might help the public in that regard.
Okay.
Fair enough.
HOA or not?
I don't believe so.
No HOA.
So each homeowner who's not supposed to maintain some property?
Of their own property.
I don't have any problem with the two-seventy-eight.
We got a letter.
So hearing that, we prepared a draft letter with a couple notes in there, things that we'll just amend based on this conversation. If there's no other items you'd like to include in the sketch letter, we'll take what we discussed here tonight, apply it to the letter and send it to the applicant. Good, just need a vote.
Alright, somebody wanna move it?
Amendment to send the sketch, pardon me?
Bastian, you have a second? Harry?
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Alright.
That includes the sketch plan application.
Get the letter.
Thanks, Steve. So we'll roll back into our other table applications. First one on the agenda, I'll just hit real quick, is that, again, application at twenty-three sixteen Fifth Forty-Nine Mile Point Road for a law office that has been formally withdrawn by the applicant. So we'll update that in all the records and-
It's one of those by Wegman's Target.
Yes.
Little south. Two-Fifty.
And to be in our district that has been withdrawn. So, we have one other table application, that's for Penfield Square, continued review of that project, a mixed-use development project. There's a number of items on the board's agenda tonight. They've been covered in the applicant's letter that was submitted on Friday as well. Just looking at it quickly, you have items such as areas with the road dedication area with an update to that, crosswalks that we discussed last time, landscaping in the public green, some parking modifications and responses to other comments. AJ, I don't know if you have a preference of where you'd like to start or if you want me to kinda walk through?
I don't really have a preference.
Okay.
I'm ambivalent.
That's nice, it's nice of you.
I use that word whenever I can.
I'll try to start with the simple things. The landscape plan was, was received by the board at the previous meeting. And, well, in between last meeting and this meeting, it was submitted on the twenty-seventh. That was sent to the landscape consultant of the board between that time and now. Their comment, his comments came back with support of everything shown. Don't really have comments, but make sure that there's an impressive thorough maintenance package prepared for that eventual owner, developer and manager of the property. So, tonight we do have a landscape, a colored version of that landscape plan, just to show the board. And to see if you have any other thoughts on it, there's some rendering shown it and we also have some details to show you about some of those elements in the pedestrian areas such as benches, tables, trash receptacles, so on and so forth. So we start with here, this is the colored version of the plan that reflects everything in the planting schedule that was reviewed by your consultant as well. So we have that.
Well, caliper of trees and whatnot for what's going in. You know, I mean-
The tree schedules on the right.
Two and a half.
Yeah. Roughly two to two and a half, couple at three.
Okay.
And then we'll just jump over to one of the detailed sheets to show you. Okay, so as a plan, let's show the other one. This gives you some, we can zoom into some of the pieces, such as the bench features they wanna show, some bike racks, trash receptacles. Ideas that they're forming for the public green area.
Mm-hmm.
And, okay. Go slowly through these so you can kinda take a minute to look at them. Stop us if you see anything. There's some outdoor lighting elements and, you know, we've had a chance to look at the lighting plan, we can get to that after if you want.
Yep.
More lighting cut sheets in there. Do you have pretty, anything that jumped out to the board as we're looking at some of these elements?
The picnic benches. Where are the plan with those going? I mean, the only thing that doesn't, it seems to
Believe.
Not get is, it looks kinda modern except those.
Yeah, those are shown
Right there.
Right now in the pu, in the, in the public green area on that, that hardscape element. The rest is surrounded by chairs and benches, there's a couple in the pocket park as well, off to the west side of the site. I believe that's gonna be a statue monument structure there, just kinda a piece of art. And then you have along the pedestrian spine there, that's more of the outdoor seating, when you see those tables there that go with the cafes and stores.
The restaurants.
Yep.
So in effect, those are suggested not necessarily happening?
What's that, I'm sorry?
The chairs and tables along the west side of that pedestrian spine.
Well, I would envision them for at least the cafe and the dining areas for the overall community for guests and residents. Cause we know that that will feature some sort of food option there. We're still, um, we're planning for, again, some non-residential retail commercial space at the two other outbuildings where they do have space available for that depending on the tenants that come in.
That curved, arched element is, is that proposed as stone dust or what's that?
I believe that's concrete, similar to the, in previous area, but Peter, if I'm wrong, stone dust, I'm sorry. Got that one mixed up.
Do you wanna, like, go through some quick highlights or something?
Yeah.
Of this?
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot, but-
Yeah, okay. Just here to answer questions. So I guess, come up?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
I know this is a little unconventional. Opportunity to be on TV in front of millions of people in Penfield.
Shira, Shira Kato.
Thank you.
So I guess what we really did for this plan was go into more detail. We wanted to think about creating a space that would be, you know, an exciting pilot project that could really set a precedent for this development. And I'm getting excited about it, I think it's gonna be really cool. So basically, some of the elements you guys know about, you know, there's the town green, we spent some more time designing that. We have much larger rain gardens, we've been working, you know, with BME, trying to figure out how much water we need to manage, but now we really wanna use it as a design element.
So the rain garden, will that be soggy all the time? Or is it, is it, you know, designed so that, you know, if it's dry for a week, people can walk through it?
AJ, it'll drain dry.
It is right now, yeah.
It will drain dry, yes.
And it will be also, you know, inundated sometimes, but the concept of it now, it's gonna have curves around it and there's actually, okay, how do I use this?
A little red.
Alright, so, ooh, I did, did I do that?
No, I did not.
Wrong spot.
Why did you do it wrong?
The same, the same, what we were looking at previously.
The public green, that's rain gardens.
So the idea is that now, this is a sidewalk, this is concrete, this is concrete. And the way we're proposing it, this is a metal bridge that'll go over top of the rain garden. So this'll have curves on either side. It won't be a traversable rain garden, it'll be sunken in, so it'll be a design element, not immediately sunk in.
Sort of like corrugated metal?
Correct.
Alright.
Correct, so it'll be-
Not a slip surface?
Right, so now it's gonna be like a cool design element, like when you see green infrastructure and more of an urban setting where you have two curves on the inside, on the outside of it, and you can actually walk over it with a bridge. And it becomes sort of, you know, we like to, you know, educational, but it's more showcased, right? So instead of just being a depression that is also managing the water, that's unusable space in the green, we've organized it in a way and designed around it, so now it becomes a feature. And I think that it could actually be really cool. And what we're proposing in there now is just wildflower and sedge's seed mix. So it'll have sort of that sort of messy ecosystems, orderly frames vibe that, because it is designed around it, we do have hard edges around it, it has an urban feel, but it will be a natural.
I mean, are we talking like marginal type plants or what kind of?
Well, we were looking at the Ernst Conservation Seed Mixes, so the one that I picked for it, but this could be, you know, discussed still, but was their more showy rain garden, so it's, you know, it has a number of wildflowers and a number of sedges. So it's got like little blue stem and I think it has, you know, some black-eyed susans and some things that can be inundated, but also can live without the, the cost of water. So that's what's happening there. And then, you know, we worked on the pedestrian spine to really pick out some furniture and some things to give it a theme. We have, we really worked with, you know, wanting to pay homage to the agricultural setting and the traditional materials, but we also wanted to bring in some sort of contemporary bursts, you know, so it's like, has a little bit of contemporary stuff. So the concept of the lighting is that we have columns that are light columns that are going up there. If you move it down a little bit, I have some sketch-up views, I'll go on. Yeah, so, okay, so you can start to see, so we have these light columns that are these ones. And we've picked out ones that are color-changing, so they have the RGB settings so that we could change them to- you know, different colors in the holidays, or if there was an event, or maybe they're just purple, cause it's happy hour.
D O X control.
The ones that are on there, I'm not sure, but that'll also come down to budget, I'm sure, like, what happens with those, but I've picked out some fixtures that I think are very reasonable, and I think that we could probably pass, but I've included some language that we can, you know, go back and forth on that, but the concept is that they are color-changing light columns. Um, and that we would have some overhead lighting with the bistro lighting, um, where there are, you know, seating areas and it turns into dining. Um, and then we wanted to have a little, so this area that's the tree lawn, we've picked out pavers, so that would be more of like a plank stone paver. And then we have these detailed pavers that go along the edges, this is also a paver, and then the center, it would just be, um, scored concrete, and then on, and the interior areas that are the private areas, it would be, um, an exposed aggregate. So I have a two-by-two, just getting into the detail, but I found like a twenty-four inch by twenty-four inch paper that could be this detail, and then we could have a four-foot scoring pattern, so it would all sort of flow together and be nice. Um, and I found a paper that comes in all of these different sizes, so we could actually use the same paper, but just in different, um, denominations to make that all work. And then we didn't want it to be too hardscaped, because it was just looking a little bit too gray, so we wanted to plant, um, the tree pits, so we're showing a Corten steel edging detail for our tree pits and getting rid of the tree grate, and allowing that to be, um, a vegetated area. Um, and then we were thinking for if we end up with, and you know, these don't necessarily have to have the fences, but if, and it could be something simpler, but just as a concept, we're thinking, you know, playing off of the three or four rail fence that you'll, you'll find in, you know, typical agricultural fields with, with a wooden cap to bring that back, and here you can see, um, some of the benches that we've picked out, which are more contemporary. So that's really what's happening there.
That's so that people in the assisted living don't die in a ditch, right?
That's exactly what it's for. And the idea for the benches also is that we have these backless, right, and we have the backless benches, that are really wide backless benches, this bench that makes it in would be really amazing if it for this area, because you don't sort of really wanna look in or out, you wanna be able to look both ways. And it's a, a wide, two-foot wide, solid, um, contemporary bench that you could, you know, you could be able to watch the street, watching the pedestrians fine, you know, it, it doesn't, it doesn't cut off anything. Of course, we've included bike racks, because it's essential for, for this type of development and for everywhere. Um, and, and yeah, that's where we're sort of going in. Any other questions?
Uh, he'd probably, vehicle charging stations, things like that that are, um, starting to get more prevalent.
We haven't included any of those in this plan, but, I mean, if that came back in comments, I have to speak with my client, but that.
Yeah, AJ, we had talked about providing one on the north side.
Oh, Debbie's side of the building, that's right.
Yeah, I would think for the people in the independent living,
Yeah, that's where it belongs, belongs.
Where they park.
Yeah.
People who still drive.
At least, at least put in the conduits.
Totally.
Yeah, um, and I think, I'd have to go back, but I think June of this year, there was something passed in New York State that said any rental properties that if there's no charging stations, that the owner or the management has to make reasonable accommodations.
Sure.
Even though it could be at the expense of
Sure.
the tenant. But I guess it would be as a minimum, it'd be nice just to see the conduits in place, and then it would make it a lot easier.
Yeah, I, I think we, we presume we're doing it very dismat.
Okay.
That's why I apologize, I didn't know about that, but I'll add it to the.
And there is some dollars available, but once the application is approved for NICEERTA, you have six months to get it in unless you do extensions, but the NICEERTA, um, dollars, for most projects, you can do it for almost no cost, cause it's four thousand dollars per port.
You can do it for, I'll tell you, definitely.
Yeah, yeah. You can buy it four thousand dollars per port, or eight thousand dollars for just a dual, yeah.
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 Okay.
It, it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, should I sit down? I feel.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Look, I'm just, I'll stand here.
The corrugated over the, the, um, rain garden, the corrugated metal bridge.
Mm-hmm.
When you say corrugated, I think of a, a non-smooth surface, is it gonna be used for walking over it?
Yes.
What kind of a surface is it though?
Well.
Is it smooth, that's my question.
No, it's not smooth, it's not smooth, I mean, it would be sort of a great bridge, I mean, we, we haven't detailed it completely.
Sort of like a bridge over a canal, or like a mezzanine or something.
Right, I have a railing, obviously.
If you stop and think about the people who are gonna be living here, you gotta have to do canes and walkers and everything else. So I would keep that in mind, you don't want something where if somebody has a cane, then they'll lose.
That makes, that makes a lot of sense, so we'd have to look for one that has a tight enough lead, you know, that has a good accessibility rating.
Warning signs, no canes or high heels or something.
Well, that's a, that's a real concern though.
No, that, that's a very good point, so we could find something like that, or it, but just to make, I wouldn't think of it being rough, I just wouldn't want it to be slippery. You know, so, that was basically the thing, but it'd been, exactly, textured, textured.
And then the light columns, I'm not that familiar with them, could you elaborate on the light columns, is that just opposed to? Would it look like is the top four-foot section is a, is a light?
Be like a big acrylic cylinder?
Vertical light.
And the whole thing glows.
Yeah, and then the light, this part glows.
So it provides some, some usable light, but probably mostly decorative.
Yup.
So if you're walking down the sidewalk during the night, will it be lit up?
Yes.
Five-foot candles.
There's also lights coming out of the door.
There'll also be lights coming out of the building, and there'll also be overhead lighting. And I know that there was a question if there was maybe landscape lighting and more, um, that scale lighting, and yes, we've definitely started to think about those things, we haven't included them all in this plan, cause it just gets to a lot of detail, but of course, we'd be thinking about, you know, I mean, just in my brain, you know, exactly, or
Applying the trees.
Or having some accent lights in these, and lighting, you know, some of the grasses, and having some movement there, so.
Architectural features on the buildings.
Exactly, exactly. So, yes, all those things, but that scale hasn't been included on the plans, only, you know, baller scale and, uh.
Did you see those in the cut sheet?
I just.
I saw this stuff in the cut sheet, I didn't see any here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Wait, I got one more. So, if you could just share with the board, the approximate height of the foliage and the trees for the first three to five years that they go in, are they gonna be the, the height of the?
The SketchUp?
No, it will not be that height, but, um, it depends, well, it also depends on what trees we have, so we're showing sugar maples, um, which are a fast-growing tree, and they're a high-branching tree. Um, and they're also a great traditional tree for, like, you know, dividing agricultural fields and things like that, and they do grow very quickly. And they're comfortable to walk by, and we have a very, very wide walkway, so I don't see it being something that's gonna interfere with pedestrians. Additionally, we have potentially the opportunity, um, with, with home leasing, I don't know, cause Nelson has those great sugar maples, and I'm always trying to find a home for him, and I've, I planted this idea, I'm like, we should use your sugar maples for this. For the main pedestrian spine. But he has them on his farm, and I've seen him, and they are great, and he's always wanted to use them on projects, and if we could somehow, I mean, that transplanting trees is everything to do with timing, right, so it has to do with planning, it's not something that you can just willy-nilly decide that we're gonna do that, it has to be something that we know that we're gonna do, we planned for it, and it's something worked into our schedule. Um, but if that happened, I mean, that would be amazing, cause that gives you the look of an established project right in the beginning, because you have trees that are larger, and it looks like it's been there for years. Um, but the sugar maple, even if we plant it at a small caliber, they grow quickly, so in a few years, we'll have a nice established tree that starts to take some, have a real presence, right, and it shouldn't be something that interferes with pedestrians, because we have a very nice wide walkway, is that why you're asking?
I'm asking because, because we often see renderings.
Thirty years down the road.
Right.
And, and then the public comes back and, and says to us, well, we saw this on television, or we, we were at the town hall, and we expected to see something more than
Right.
what was built, what's missing, so I.
That's why I always try to sell the idea of transplanted trees, because people shy away from it, because there's a risk always if you transplant, you can't guarantee, you can't guarantee a tree, because it's alive. Right, you know, it's biology, it's alive, so it might die. Um, but if you do it properly, I've had very good luck transplanting trees, and I've had that experience, that you bring in a large tree, and you have a project that's three months old, or it went six months old, you know, give it six months to, to take root and establish in itself, and it really has the presence of an established project, so, I mean, there's, there's some value there that potentially we could look into, but there's always that, I mean, with a landscape project, it's, you know, it does take a number of years, and a number of years is when you really start to see the way it looks, you know, it's like our, our profession is a patience game, unfortunately.
Thank you.
You know, it's like.
Can you go back to the public square part and kinda go into your vision for that arc walkway and that sort of?
Will that help?
Sure.
Is that?
You're getting good at it.
The little thing at one o'clock?
One o'clock?
Yeah, that.
That, okay, so, this is just, we wanted to bring people into the park, we're trying to, you know, we're minimizing the hardscape. Um, this, uh, paving will match the same path paving, so it will, you know, tie in the campus. The idea is that this is a large space that can be used for, you know, gatherings, if there was a concert here, et cetera. Um, this is a large walkway, we widened it, so if you needed to bring a vehicle in there, um, you're able to do that. Also, this.
So it'll be strong enough and solid enough to support?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Um, this area up here is a flat area, because we thought if, there's like a food truck rodeo or something here, we want people to have the space to gather and be able to walk around and have this be dry, so, we went back and forth a lot, trying to figure out how we could get good usable space and still manage the amount of water that we need to manage, so um, we came up with a solution where this is a flat area, this is a dry space, so that if you, yeah, if you had events, people could gather here, and then this area here that's planted is sloping down, so this is all sloping down, and then we get into this nice flat area again. So we were able to have as much usable space as we could.
What's our elevation change on that slope?
It's about, uh, anywhere from four to six feet, AJ, so really what you're gonna, cause we, remember, how much slope is lost east to west across this property? So what we've done is, as Shira has pointed out, is create that upper level terrace. Um, and then where you, uh, where the cursor is now, that is the sloped area, and then, then a lower level, but so it's gonna, you're gonna have a terrorist effect, you know, so what that town would become?
It's not extinct though, it's gonna be.
No, it's, so, right, it's gonna be a terrorist town green, it's actually gonna be really neat. She, she's explained it perfectly, is because of the dynamic of uses, if, we've talked a lot about these pop-up
Right.
food truck rodeos or pop-up.
Well, and this, I don't necessarily wanna belabor this, but I do, because this has been one of those, it's gonna be a main focal point, very visible.
Right. And I think that's what this does, is it actually does make it a focal point in lieu of it being, if you think of pavement to pavement, that just being flat across, then that looks actually plain and generic. I think using their proposal, the proposal there of the terracing
Mm-hmm.
gives it some character, and really does attract the eye and attract the user, it gives it a unique feel.
But it keeps this big open space that can be very flexible used.
And drawn, right.
A lot of different uses.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that's what we're really trying to find, like, no nice drawn flat places.
It's not small, the town green, the green space, I think is gonna be bigger than people think, if they're watch, looking at it right now.
So, and, and that's the other part, so if you do have something happening down in the lower left-hand corner there, where that, if that's the, the, the pop-up concert type thing.
That's also stone dust?
Yup.
Yes.
Why is stone dust versus paper?
So those, those people up at the food truck area are, are gonna be elevated to look down.
Right.
So, you know.
I think we're just getting into, you know, cost, also permeable surface, and something that can be phased, so I love this as stone dust, I think that always wants to be stone dust, but you know, we had in earlier, you know, iterations, we had, you know, a structure, we had things, you know, so giving this space as a pad is sort of like, it's a nice space, it's a versatile space, you could use it for concerts, you could use it for gatherings. Um, and then in the future, someone said, oh my goodness, this place is super popular, people are here all the time, we have, you know, five hundred people, we have concerts, maybe let's put in a structure, let's put in some, you know what I mean, so, it sort of also could be phased, and it's a phase one of anything. Um, but depending on what happens with the space, how people end up using it, and then it can sort of follow that. Um, and then, what we also proposed in here are just, you know, um, movable Adirondack chairs, that would be commercial grades, people can go up and have a little bit of flexibility and just hang out in the park. Um, and then we, we put in some chess tables here, so, you know, if people wanna go and play chess, and also like that traditional park feel.
Right.
Um, and, yeah, I mean, I, I like it, so I think it's starting to be pretty cool.
Can you also go into the pocket park in the southwest?
Sure.
Talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so, the pocket park idea is that we were, well, we were tossing out this idea of having, you know, some sort of sculpture. Some, at one point, it was mentioned that potentially there was a sculpture that was a tractor, or, or something like that, and not sure if that's actually happening, but thinking that this is a tractor, the idea, or, or some sort of interpretation of what's happening here, that there's sort of like tracks coming through, and then this would be semi-elevated, I actually had renders of this also, and it actually, and it looks nice and simple, but.
Was it on the sheet?
No, my file stopped working. You're ahead on, it says.
Oh, all time, all time.
It says unknown file format, and I tried to Google all the nerds to help me out of it, and no one can fix it for me.
No nerds?
No.
No nerds.
Um, but anyway, so basically, this is, this is a
Not good.
This is a track, it's sort of like a symbolic track, these would be, could be used as the similar papers that we have there, but with a different, um, dimension. And then they would be sort of slightly raising to here, and then lowering, not a lot, maybe a foot. Um, then this is a straight concrete, flat, you know, accessible walk that goes out into the public area. Um, and then this is more stormwater management, so this would be a swell that would be vegetated and managing water in a similar way to there, and this would be a bridge over that swell, and then we have just sort of an area of slab pavers with grass joints, less accessible, but more, this is like a public park, right, so this would be slab pavers with, um, with grass joints, and then timber.
Maintenance on that, to keep it, I mean, when those are well-maintained, they look really cool.
Amazing, and when they're not, they're like bad.
Yeah.
It would have to be, if there was maintenance where we could do it, if not, we could always fill it, you know, with stone dust, or, or not with stone dust, but with a sand, you know what I mean, it could be a sand joint.
Could be maintained.
We maintain our parks.
But it would be so nice if there were natural stones and they had grass joints, and then, I was thinking we could use timbers to create, you know, really simple benches, that would be timber benches, maybe partially with a back and partially with, with not a back, and then these are natural stone freestanding walls that would go through, and then there's just sort of large sedge plantings that would be able to, you know, just to have some movement, and the rest would be cut grass.
Okay.
It looks nice when it's in there, I mean, it looks, I like the park when it comes out, but I sniffed one shot of it, and that's the only thing I have in my file夹, so.
Hey, at least you got one.
I got one, it's there for posterity, I wanna do it again.
We'll take it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Any comments on that? Is there any, is there any cabinets, any concerns?
No. So he was supportive of everything, to AJ's point, he just said, obviously, what the proposing will require a lot of maintenance, and therefore a thorough maintenance schedule should be constructed and provided for the developer and, and the property managers.
There are any public restrooms proposed for this?
I'm just trying to think of. Um, I'll say no, there's not public restrooms. Uh, but, um, if our independent living is serving as, um, you know, has sort of an event, we do have restrooms in the kind of public entry corridor community room.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but also, the cafe is gonna be a public cafe, so, uh, the cafe will have a, uh, restroom. And if either of these commercial spaces are food related, they will have restrooms. So, um, you know, if you really need to use the restroom, I, you have options.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just thinking about, you know, you have a, an event or food truck rodeo or something, and
Yeah, I, if you have a big event like that, I'd bring in, um, you know,
Trailer.
That's what we call them, satellites, cause that's what we call them.
Those Johnny-on-the-spot or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, they'd be fancier ones.
I know. Okay.
I think they did a marvelous job, I think they, they listened very well to what the board has said
Mm-hmm.
and what the public has said, and I think that the response as this plan has evolved is terrific.
Oh, yeah, well, it's very nice. Would agree. Okay, we good with the landscape plan?
Yes, did you have comments about any of the lighting features, or would you like to see more of the cut sheets for those building mountain pictures as we're getting closer to those?
As we get closer, I mean, obviously, they're not, uh, completely done, but I definitely want.
All the details.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just, can you just clarify as we get closer to what?
Well.
Are you talking like, for instance?
After approval administrative thing, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that, that could work.
We do have the ability. We do have the ability in the pre-milar review part, as you're kind of narrowing down those fixtures, that AJ and Town Engineer have the ability to look at those in pre-milar.
Right. Okay.
Were there photometrics?
There were photometrics on the uh streetlights.
Okay.
Uh, isofocannals.
The thing's most visible. It's on no lighting plan separate from this.
We can go to that. There were no photometrics submitted for those poles or for the bistro lights or any of that stuff.
Right, parking areas.
But the street and the parking area. The one thing I noticed that there's nothing really proposed for Road A, just using the existing YMCA lights?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's their road. You know, that's, that's the challenge there AJ, is it's their road.
So the nice thing about the um existing islands is some of them actually have some pretty mature trees on the street, right? So, maintaining that actually is kind of nice about, that's the one, nice thing about maintaining.
You're talking about the islands on the north, on the south end of-
Exactly, yeah.
We'd be able to plot the photometrics of the existing lighting.
You have some of those islands, you have some of the islands now.
We, we can do that, cause we can get the information applied.
Right.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want the road, that roadway to be dark, so that's something that we'll have to-
And that's not dedicated-
You can see they're on the right there.
There's one on the north side right there.
And that's not a dedicated road to the town.
Correct, that was one of the updates that was explained in their letter again as well, how the plat was, how the plat map's been revised to show not, to, to, to not include the dedication of Road A. Uh, with this project, and that's why the Y is maintaining what they have today. The one thing that has been updated on Road A while we're on the topic of, uh, and I'll jump into the crosswalk portion of this if you don't mind AJ.
Sure.
Um, Doug, if you wrote a site plan, that would be the best help. Thank you. Thank you, zoom into that main crosswalk there off the pedestrian spine. Thank you. Uh, one of the items the board reviewed at the last meeting was requesting that, uh, areas such as these where crosswalks are being planned across these main roads. Is that they become, they have a terminal, so they have somewhere where someone can land and then re-enter uh on their path, whether you're traversing from the YMCA. Or, uh, from the public green area, the pedestrian spine, so what's being proposed now, since the road is still private, um, is a stamped concrete section. Uh, leading to that island, they would modify that island slightly, uh, where they eliminate a parking space where you see this arrow. Coming in here, this would be filled out to have a, a safe landing pad where you come up the transition, uh, you can get off the road, off the crosswalk to a, uh, landing area. And then proceed back out to the YMCA if that's your destination, or again, if you're coming the other way, leading to it and into the area. Other crosswalks along Road A and B are striped, this is the only one with the stamped concrete, um, something the board was looking at. And like before I go too far, the reason they're staying that way is they maintain their, um, kind of contiguous shape, a straight forward pathway to, you know, perhaps, it could be changed in the future, but right now it's just showing a straight pathway. Off where this, uh, the concrete ends within the project area. One of the things that were discussed and was included in this, the tabling letter from the previous meeting was, in areas such as this off the pedestrian corridor through the spine area. Um, that the applicant can look at, a raised crosswalk.
We talked about that.
And I would open that back up to the board now, uh, they've offered this as an alternative to it, again, as the roads remain private. It's something that would be, is obviously easier to maintain through the winter months, uh, for snow maintenance, um, but it's something, depending on how your conversation goes, if it goes where. This is how it would, how, this is the acceptable crosswalk uh layout, you know, if the road does get dedicated in the future, which we envision it, uh, becoming dedicated, Road A and Road B as development takes place in the north. That a raised crosswalk would be installed, um, as part of that, but before we go down there, assuming that's what happens, I just wanted to open up to the board to discuss that, since it was something that was brought up last meeting.
I think that the dynamic of this road changes dramatically as this project gets completed. And, you know, they've, they've talked at length about not knowing really what they want to do with that public town space. Um, but wanting it to be flexible, and they talked about different things that they could do, and, you know, this could house a lot of people. Um, and if, and if their plan, uh, is successful, then they'll get residents in, in this complex using the YMCA. And they'll get people that patronize the YMCA going across the roadway to attend functions. I think a raised crosswalk is, is appropriate there. You know, certainly some traffic calming, um, would be in order there.
I agree, I, I like, I like the idea of a raised crosswalk be, because of both those reasons, traffic calming.
What's the argument against a raised crosswalk?
I-
Snow removal?
No, it isn't, if you don't, if, if you don't mind, the, the issue is, uh, the bigger issue is, if you, is, would be a car that's entering, coming down Road A. And wants to turn left into that drive aisle right where the cursor is, that's a raised crosswalk. He's kind of ramping up on that crosswalk, then to, to enter the, the, the drive aisle, same thing exiting it, if they wanted to exit and go left. It's just doesn't create a good geometry with, uh, with the traffic flow if they're getting in and out of that, those parking aisles, that's, that's the challenge.
They relocate the raised crossing or, or rework the island?
The, the problem is it's not our property.
We can't, we can't close that yet.
Right.
Right, so, in order to make a raised crosswalk rational, you want to go straight across the road, and we can't do that.
So, Peter, just-
And the other thing I'd add is raised, you know, raised, um, crosswalks, you know, again, we wanna calm cars, and I think this does calm out cars, even the, even the scored concrete or whatever calms cars. Um, but people hate going over speed bumps, and I think what will happen is people come into the Y, people are gonna avoid going over it. And so they will only utilize those first entrances to the Y and start causing parking, queuing, chaos in there. Uh, people will not utilize those other entrances into the Y because they just don't wanna go over that path. And that's another thing, I think the Y's a certain obvious.
Sure.
Peter, can I clarify, what, what was one thing now too? Um, with the re, with the revised plat map, no improvements other than the entrance drive coming in is being done on the Y's property?
And we are, they are allowing for the closure of that, right, yep, right with the corners.
Where I am, that was my second point, I wasn't sure if that was-
That is going to still be closed as long as the one at, at the, at the east end.
Okay. Couldn't, so there are some site improvements.
Yep.
Yes, red line.
And then the sidewalk, right on the-
And then the sidewalk on the north side of the road will be constructed, uh, that's, that's on the way.
Why couldn't this go perpendicular across the, and just have it end up right here? Instead of angled, so you're walking down, you just go over twenty feet?
This kind of is strange to say, but the awkward thing about this is that when you walk to the Y or from the Y, you're gonna be walking in the drive aisle, because it's a parking lot. And so, wherever we actually put this thing, no one's actually gonna walk there. Right, they're gonna go straight up the driveway, drive aisle, and cross the street straight onto our sidewalk. We're providing this access because you do have to accommodate, give people a safe place to stand, to wait, but in reality, no one's actually gonna stand there, right?
Well, I, I, I think that you have a valid point for a period of time. So, assuming the plan goes as planned, and you're very successful, and you have a ton of people living in the independent living, and they're all using the Y. Market demand to the Y will probably cause them to accommodate some better pedestrian traffic pattern on their property. Would be my guess. Will it happen right away?
Future improvements if they're doing some sort of-
I would say AJ, that, that definitely is a possibility, because I, that is, that is the concern the YMCA has, is they are very sensitive to their membership. That's why the original ideas that we had discussed was, oh, could we close this access?
Mm-hmm.
The Y is against it because of their concern of the, uh, feedback from their, for their membership.
Accessibility.
So the point is, your point is, that may end up working to, to the positive. I, thus, so I think really what the, the solution is, it's, it's very similar to the discussion we had with the Town Board as it relates to dedicating this road. And that I know the Town Engineer also supports, which is, we have the ability to kind of make this a wait and see what occurs. Let's, just as, as, as Jim pointed out and, and whatnot, we believe this is gonna be very successful as it relates to the public use of these spaces. And I think what we have the ability to do here is let's really see how it works, and it's almost one of those things, let's see how it operates for a while. Then make the right decision as to how we address pedestrian movement between the two properties, how we address traffic calming through Road A. Point being is, and the Town will have the ability to have a say in that, because if it comes, cause it'll come down to the dedication of Road A. The Town Board felt comfortable with that approach, the Town Engineer felt comfortable with that approach of, you know, we have the ability to see how these two projects are gonna interact together. And, and, and that first conversation was from a vehicular standpoint, now what we're talking about with you, let's see how they interact together as a pedestrian standpoint too, then make the right decision.
So you got the pros and cons.
Chicken or egg?
I mean, the point is, what we don't wanna do is obviously, put a, whether it's a raised crosswalk in there, a stamped crosswalk in there, and then find out it, it doesn't work, and then have to tear it out. And, and right, wrong, or a different part of the challenge we, we have is the, as I said, is, at the end of the day, the YMCA, it's, it's the YMCA's roads, they have to agree to this.
Right.
Well, what we really wanna do Peter is, is, is have, um, a, a, a dangerous condition or a conditions that, that's not conducive to pedestrians in a very heavy vehicular roadway.
Right, hundred percent agree with that Jim, yeah.
So, I, I would prefer that we err on the side of protecting the pedestrians. And for the same argument, they say they can always go back and revisit it, well, they can always go back and, and-
If it's not working out, you rip it out?
Yep.
There's something that I just thought of, and I wanna float it out there for the board and, and for the applicant to hear, um, just based on this conversation. We look at it right now, and it's a narrow stamped concrete awkward path, if you will.
Yep.
Um, with some proposed changes to the islands. It's gonna sound like I'm taking a step backwards here, but rather than the stamped concrete, since we are, if we take this wait and see approach, based on pedestrian activity and always trying to protect the pedestrian. Would it make more sense to take this area? And use kind of a wider, uh, a wider coverage area for a striped crosswalk that is more of a visual presence to drivers where it's covering, say like.
Yes.
This area here to, any cars coming out of here, caution, white stripes, we have pedestrian-
Yeah.
We're just talking about back here.
Hang on, hang on, I'm trying to go to the board right now. Wider squared off area here covering this, what will be a critical pedestrian area, um, with, you know, yield to pedestrian signs, so on and so forth. To try and both address the board's concerns about where are people gonna go, but also, there's probably gonna be another evolution of this crosswalk. Uh, especially as AJ said, if, you know, providing this development is, is as successful as planned, and future developments to the north, which is something we can never lose sight of in mixed use.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this being at the southern end of it, whatever happens to the north, that this pedestrian spine is gonna be carrying people from this project and future projects to the north, that. As we just started talking about, the Y will likely have to make some sort of improvements to protect its customers, its members, uh, to get them from A to B. And this path here, this driveway here, I'm pretty sure leads right to their front door.
Yes.
So it's gonna become a critical area.
I could support that.
My thought was to, I've seen this in other areas, that's why I'm just trying to think, how do we address this intersection, but also this wide, uh, present, this presence?
And I, it, with all due respect to the gentleman from PoliZing, people tend to go where you direct them to go.
We hope so.
If there's wayfinding, and there's, there's striping and difference in texture and color, and, um, that's where we lead them. So, you know, we follow the design of, of the project that we're reviewing now, um, and if you make this, you know, wide enough, they're not gonna veer around it.
Mm-hmm.
Instead it becomes a wider, more protected, more visual area at the start, at the giggle of this.
With signage.
With proper signage, of course, from, I would say honestly, at both ends of that, um, striped area, because it's gonna be on the magnitude of, you know, twenty some odd feet wide if I'm going. I'm going curb to curb.
Yes.
Totally.
Then perhaps we look at something like that.
You saying flat, or, flat or raised?
I'm saying flat and striped, as opposed to, uh, stamped-
Okay, like a wider raised area.
Not, uh, wider, flat, uh, striped only, as opposed to, uh, what I'll say is the experimental stamped diagonal one here. The stamped concrete comes out of a inspiration to make it colored and stand out more, but again, if, we got people that, people will, I mean, anyone who doesn't wanna land here is gonna step off and go down the road if there's no objections. Um, or obstructions rather, and if, I'm thinking like college settings, you know, college campuses, everything has to be walkable, you see a lot of these wider striped areas now. Uh, everything yield to pedestrian, stop to pedestrian.
Well, here, everything has to be walkable, that's one of the guidelines.
Yep, and, I mean, a lot of the draws from settings like that, so it's not even, I will take it one step further, it's not a yield to pedestrian, it's a stop to pedestrians in the crossings now. Uh, with those highlighter signs that are about four feet tall, so, um, thought of it, wanted to float it out there.
Yeah, I like, I like the idea of striking that, just much wider.
Wide section.
And I don't know if, you know, I think a couple of years ago, what the school district did on certain streets like Scribner, they have those standalone signals. And you may not have to go to that extent, but when somebody wants to cross, they push it, and then the light just flashes.
For, yeah, for schools it, it works, I don't, haven't seen it too much in these applications, cause, I mean, you drive, drive down some, uh, like some downtown areas, for example, that have your street parking, your crosswalks, um. I have seen strobe lights, I have seen, you know, warning, there's a pedestrian here, um, it's not like Florida, I saw it, but I think it's an option if something continues to evolve.
Okay.
I like it.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, yeah, it's special. Bill?
Yeah, I like that idea.
Good job, me. I can have my moments, come on. Um-
Your work here is done.
Yeah, I wish, I wish, got a couple other things there, talk about the crosswalk, um. This lighting plan, talk about that, I'll get into that after, would you like to see the building material samples that they brought in this evening? Uh, that was one of the requests from the previous meeting, see- That was one of the requests from the previous meeting. See how these things, these materials will interact. I think how you asked for it, AJ. So you jump to the renderings, Doug, from probably in the active project folder at this point. And then however you guys want to do it, the floor is yours again.
Hi, LaCia Fornataro, SWBR. So what we brought you today is just, I don't know if it's easier for you to come up or if you want me to just lift these up and.
Are they pretty heavy?
Hang on.
They are pretty heavy.
You guys, I'll hold.
So, so this is the AL sample material. So we're looking at a brick base and if the renderings come up, we could zoom into those. So the bottom right hand side.
Oh, the laser pointer.
That's fine. So we're looking at break for that vertical, the, the bump out to the vertical spaces. Yep. And then we have greenish tone siding. So this is kind of the palette that we're looking at for the assisted living building.
So that's here?
Which is the fill of, yes.
What type of siding is that? Is it vinyl?
It is vinyl. Yes. And I think at this point, we've addressed most of the comments, as I said at the beginning, we've addressed most of the comments that we've received from the consultant on the architectural side. So plan, plans comments, as well as having a workshop with Chris Lopez in-house. And that was very productive. So I think we're on, you know, on the same page as far as that goes. So for material, so this is the assisted living, so if you want to step down. And then the independent living has the stone base with different color of siding for the rest of the building. And that's what these are showing.
So that stone is here?
Yes.
And here?
Yes. And then it wraps around at the front of the campus as you drive in. So on that side. And then siding, the field of the, the rest of the, you know, the remainder of the building would be vinyl. Again, we've gone through different iterations and I guess that's what we're, you know, that's what we landed with. Darker color on the base, that's what you see right there. And the white at the top, I believe we're missing the dark gray. And then as far as the memory care goes, which is in the back of the campus, it would still match the same stone for its base and it's a different sheet right there. Yep, right there. So it has, if you look in the left hand corner, a little bit of the stone that will match the IL and tie the campus together. And then we would have two different colors siding of gray to provide that relief and break the volume of that building a little bit as you drive down that road.
So this is a shadow right here?
Yes.
And it's this color?
So two different colors. So bump out to the front and the recessed back. So it is a long elevation. So what we're trying to do is just kind of, you know, get a little bit of relief and then different coloration so that you can break down the volume. So the out parcels, these are the samples of the actual siding, but not the right colors, just for letting you know what it will look like. So this is the board and batten.
That's the vertical part that's here, like up here?
Yep. So board and batten where it's shown vertical and then lap, which I think everybody's familiar with. The last piece, what we have and what we're looking at for the out parcel, these are pretty small and easy to contain. It's a panel system that mimics a wood look. And, and we've used it successfully in other projects. And I think the intent was, especially as it relates to the corner, having the idea that it kind of refers back to the agricultural setting and potentially more of a barn feel to it. So these are placeholders at this point. We don't have a definite tenant for both the out parcels, but for the intensive, the plan as it stands today, that's what we're showing. So questions, concerns?
Want to hold anything up again?
Go for it and walk up and click the button.
Just hold up the heaviest one for a little while if you don't mind.
Stay here the whole time?
You're good.
I got used to it.
Thank you.
Start twirling it?
Yeah.
Like those sign guys?
Yeah.
Might hurt.
Any questions on that? Good with the materials and, okay? Next.
Back to me already.
Seeker.
Yes. I know for a while, we haven't been able to really make a lot of headway on Seeker because we were waiting for final designs on sanitary and storm layouts. We have received those. Those came in Friday, the engineers report. Mike and Mark, they've had a chance to take a look at everything. They are comfortable. And don't like, put words in your mouth as I shouldn't, tell me.
You're good.
But they are comfortable with everything that's been presented by the applicants for all the designs. And therefore, at this point, the board, since I've never heard objections to this, you could direct staff to prepare parts two and part three of the Foley AF as well as what I have interpreted from our conversations thus far, negative declaration for environmental significance because this is a type one action because it is in an ag district.
Yes.
Yes.
So we probably should make a motion for that.
So move, second.
So we, we would be.
So we're going to be.
That's our motion to start preparing those items.
It's not actually declaring negative.
No, that wouldn't declare anything. It's just a motion to prepare them. You would be adopting.
And we're not running into any snafus with new changes in the seeker. That doesn't affect this, right?
No.
It's just on, isn't it just on like.
One, but.
Is it numbers of units or something?
It's a type one.
It is a type one action already.
We're already in type one. It'd be different if we were looking at this as a listed.
Unless it goes to type one. Okay. Just wanted to verify that.
Oh, yes. Let's finish our roll call vote just to prepare those things.
Heskey?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Canower?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
We can have discussion after we move something.
Process, process, process. Come on, don't go.
Do you have any changes on Seeker have to do with like if it's like scoping stuff? So that's not really going to be applicable.
Night deck. So again, you'd be adopting this night deck at your next meeting along with taking a vote on the EAF to accept that. So again, we are in a good, we're in a good space now with the utility designs for both sanitary and storm. A lot of progress was made between all of our previous meetings and now on that.
What else do we have before we start preparing a resolution?
Looking at everything, we just, I think we just put the final nail, hit the final nail on the architecture. So that concludes your view on that. Landscaping seems like we're in a very good place there.
Except that we'll need to leave a placeholder for the two out parcels.
Yep.
That are now conceptual.
Yes.
Subject to.
Vinyl.
Well, subject to revisions that a potential tenant might.
Right. And thank you for bringing that up, Jim. We would, we would look at that like we've done. Baytown Plaza jumps out to me where you kind of grant an overall approval for, you know.
For site plan.
For the site plan and the layout. And the applicant would have the ability to come back as just a modification in a work session, come back as a modification to bless any changes necessary to the building, whether it be architecture, some slight alteration in the footprint of the building. That would all be covered. That would be granting a kind of an overall approval to the project at first. But architecture would be included in that as well. So we talked.
Works. That works for me.
So we have lands, we talked about the landscaping, the lighting, those final elements. It could be pre-milar technical items for those details. They are kind of more the decorative lighting at this point. Talked about traffic. There's a parking update in their letter as well. They revised a couple of portions of the site, but it has increased onsite parking to 208 spaces. So just wanted to cover that, but those have been addressed. And reason for the increase was some of the county water authority requirements as part of the site, as the site got laid out. So those have been compensated for. All staff's comments from PRC have been addressed. Again, architectural comments have been addressed. I think the, the largest, the only site plan revision I hear right now is this crosswalk item.
Entry drive and all that is all set.
Yep. Entry drive is all set. Yeah, just running through the list in my head. We've covered a lot of, a lot of things in this pedestrian circulation. We've talked about the mixed use compatibilities. We could also start preparing at this point, a draft approval resolution for the board's consideration as well.
I think you should start preparing that. No guarantees it's going to happen next month, but.
Check mine. Okay.
I'll move to do all that. Table based on.
Everything.
Preparation of all the items that we've just discussed. How does that sound?
Heskey?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Canower?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right. Getting closer, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're leaving.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it. We'll be touched that.
Perfect. We have one more item, but you guys are good if you want to.
You're welcome to stay.
It's a quick one.
And go watch the hockey game.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, you too. Have a great holiday, everybody.
Thank you. Just pulled the letter request for action items. It looked heavier than it was. The bricks they got.
Brett's a heat man.
Were you working with the YMCA before you got here? Last but not least, Bob, we do have an action ready this evening for Glendevir's at 2328 Old Browncroft Boulevard. They're simply coming in for a site plan approval extension request. The one year mark is coming up. They are in the works of preparing to start the site work next year. We're just coming up on our approval. They've requested a one year extension from the board. This is obviously a long project that's coming to this site. So.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Bastian, Canower.
Heskey?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Canower?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Perfect.
We should have gotten that over with earlier.
Sorry to make you stay sorry, Bob. Hope you enjoyed the show. We'll just slide in.
We know you have nothing better to do.
Mixed use development here. It was kind of nice to see this project set get to the point where you were drafting an approval resolution.
Yeah.
We're happy to do it. So I'll, I'll follow up with the letter documenting that. And thank you very much again.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's all we got, right?
Yes, that's all we have this evening.
Any other new or old business from anyone?
Nope.
Okay. We will adjourn. Everyone have a great holiday.